Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 19th, 2013 Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order, declare that we have a quorum present, and invite Lucy Hammond to the microphone to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucy, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? Where do you go to school? Any guests you have with you? What do you like to do? What should we know about Lucy?
I go to Cascade.
What's your favorite subject?
Reading.
Reading. You'll make a lot of people on the board up here happy to hear that. Who did you bring with you today?
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
Great. And what do you like to do when you're not studying?
Read.
Read. You've got a lot of friends up here, I can tell you that. Well, thank you all for coming. Welcome. And it's always great to start the meeting with a student leading the Pledge of Allegiance, just the way it is in schools every day.
So Lucy, though, would you introduce your mom and dad and your brother? Your brother is a pretty photogenic guy, so I think he'd probably like to be on television. So would you introduce him by name? Just, what's his name?
My brother's name is Ben.
Hi, Ben. Welcome to a school board meeting. Thank you. And your mom and dad? Do you just call them mom and dad?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for bringing your daughter. Ben, that's a pretty big book you're reading.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, the question's on the approval of the agenda. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. I should have mentioned when we opened the meeting, Ms. Crable won't be able to make it today. She's on a student-related trip or other activity, so... The approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, I move for the approval of minutes from our closed session held on March the 5th. A business meeting had minutes on the same date, and we also conducted a public hearing on March the 12th with a set of minutes, and I move for approval of all three.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Are there any comments, corrections, or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, the question's on the approval of the minutes. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We've not had anybody sign up to speak. Is there anybody here who'd like the chance to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on then to old business. First item under, there is no old business. First item under new business is consideration of professional architectural and design services for West City Elementary School. Mrs. Freeman.
Early on the agenda this evening. Mr. Rollins and I are here to present this report for the board's consideration this evening. The intent of the solicitation that we issued was to receive proposals in order to select an architect and a team of professionals to assist staff with the finalization of the educational specifications, as well as to prepare the design and specifications for constructing the new West City Elementary School. There's a brief summary of the building design in the report. It's a 63,818-square-foot building with some specific design parameters that were specified in the solicitation document that was issued to the companies who received it, of which there were 58 that we sent it to. We did have a meeting here in this building on January 24th where we were able to go over the solicitation instructions and directions for submitting a responsive proposal to the school system. We did receive proposals from 13 companies, and they were received on February 13th. They were evaluated by a selection committee that included four Washington County Public Schools staff members, and the team also included a representative of the county government. Proposals were evaluated following certain preset criteria, including experience, the proposed subconsultants, project approach, controls, financial stability of the firm, and other items of concern and interest on the part of the evaluation team. The folks that ranked the highest technically were invited to come in and make a presentation and to provide price proposals to the evaluation committee. The report that the board has does include the summary of those price offers that, from the top three technically highest-rated companies. We've discussed their proposals and are recommending here today that we, that the board in, select the Bushy Fight Moren Architect Incorporated and their team to provide these professional design services for the new West City Elementary School. Rob and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. For those of you that aren't as familiar as we are with BFM, they have provided these types of services for schools in the area for about 40 years, and the same team that they're proposing to use for West City is the same design group that worked with the county government on the design and construction of the new library in Hagerstown, as well as the state police barrack here locally. Bushy Fight also designed Morgansville Elementary School, but they've designed other schools in the area since then, and we are quite confident that they will do a good job for the school board if the board agrees to move forward with their proposal tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Is there a motion to approve RFP 2013-30? Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brighton. Questions or comments for staff? Mrs. Fisher, go ahead.
I don't have a question, just a comment. It's a shame we can't go ahead and do a five-round. I know the money's not available, but I just, with the problems right now at Pangborn with overcrowding and some other schools, I have a feeling we're going to need that space sooner rather than later.
Mrs. Brighton?
Just a couple of questions. I know that we had a design committee set up that's been working for, what, a couple months maybe back before Christmas, to make some recommendations going forward as far as the instructional and the facility, what it might look like. And I know some of that conversation was based on a work session that the board had prior to that. I guess my question to you is, was this information turned over to any of the individuals when you had your pre-bid, your meeting? How will that information be sent over to the A&E firm?
The draft ed spec, the work of that committee, was part of the RFP.
It was. It was involved. It was attached.
And the architect's been tasked then with meeting with that very same committee as we move forward and finishing up the ed spec, sending that down to the state, and then moving forward with schematics after that. So that committee has not done its work, and they'll have full input into the process.
And they'll be continuing to be part of the process as we move forward?
At least through schematics.
Okay. Can you help me with the timeline going forward now? Just a brief summary.
Sure. The ed specs we want to get done within about a month and a half, send them to the state, followed by schematics. Schematic drawings, I think we have scheduled, I think it's in July, we want to send them down, beginning of August. The state mandates that the schematic design be submitted no later than September 1st of the fiscal year coming up in order to assure funding, so we're trying to beat that by a month. And then design development, we'd have done by, I believe, end of October.
September.
September. End of September, a month ahead of the November 1st deadline, and then about seven months for construction documents, and then bidding early next summer or late spring.
Okay. And A&E is not eligible for state? This is all local money?
That's correct.
Just to clarify that. And one other, I'm particularly interested in this firm's capability to present the design in a virtual imaging way. Do they have that capability if they're so requested to do that?
Yes, they showed us some examples. We requested, asked a question during the process to show us some examples of their ability to do so, and they did to our satisfaction.
So that we maybe walk through the proposal?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, question is on the motion by Mr. Ridenhour to approve RFP 2013-30 for the design services for West City Elementary School. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Next is consideration of a number of bids. Security vestibule at Williamsport High School, waste removal for Bestor Elementary, a change in award for equipment at Bestor Elementary, and on-call architectural and engineering services.
And we're taking all of those as a consent action item this evening? All four?
We, I think what we were going to do was pull out the change award for the kitchen equipment investor and vote on that separately. And that was so that Mr. Trotta, Mr. Rollins and you could explain why we were doing the change at this time, since this bid had already been awarded. So we're looking at the security vestibule, the waste removal and recycling for the new Bestor Elementary, and the on-call A&E services.
Thank you.
So we could take them in any order you like. We're just going to have two separate motions, one that deals with the change order.
Go over a quick summary of the bids, then, that the board is going to be voting on this evening, under the consent agenda. The first bid is to create really a security vestibule and make some office renovations at Williamsport High School. The specifications describe some selective demolition and recreation of interior spaces as necessary for this security improvement. The new vestibule would be constructed on the upper side of that parking entrance area at Williamsport High School, and the administration office would be laid out a little differently with the restrooms also becoming updated and ADA compliant. This would be a summer project, and the lowest bidder is GRC General Contractors of Zellingburg, Pennsylvania, and that bid total is $120,706. The second bid, rather, was an RFQ. We invited quotes for waste removal and recycling services that are needed at the Bestor Elementary School. We got quotes from two companies. The intention here is to establish a contract allowing for the removal and off-site recycling of all of the construction debris that's being generated at the construction site there for the period, starting immediately after board approval of the contract and carrying us through May of 2014. We do have some limitations on the number of dumpsters that can be accommodated at that site. Thus, the co-mingling into a single 30 cubic yard dumpster made the most sense in terms of what we could achieve. The types of recycling products would include concrete, asphalt, brick, et cetera, vegetative waste, and any other type of construction materials. The services would be delivered in accordance with the LEED standards, such that no less than 75% of the construction waste that's generated will be recycled under the contract. And that bid is, excuse me, that quote is recommended to be awarded to a company, Environmental Alternatives Incorporated of Clarksville, Maryland. Their quoted unit rates with an estimated total of $33,250 for the performance period. And I would just add that the offset of that is the cost of disposing of those materials, which would reduce the outright expense of that contract. And the final bid on consent is for our on-call architectural and engineering services. We issued the solicitation document to 121 firms. Thirty-six companies submitted proposals for the project. The intention is to establish contracts with multiple firms in the field of architect, civil engineering, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, and structural engineering. Again, we convened a committee to look at these proposals, and it was quite an undertaking of time, staff time, to go through those, and scored the proposals, and the result being the recommendation that is in front of the board this evening. The contract would become effective upon the date of approval through March 31 of 2015, and by mutual agreement, we would have the ability to extend that contract for two additional two-year periods. The hourly rates are included in the report for your information, and they are all-inclusive of the total fees that we would be charged by the companies. The board report, I won't read the names of those companies unless you're inclined to have me do that. The names are broken out on page two, excuse me, page three of the backup report that's with the cover memo to the consent package. And we're here again, if you have any questions about any of the bids?
Is there a motion to approve the three bids recommended by staff?
Mr. President, I move to award the bids to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders on bid 2013-23 RFQ, 2013-44, and RFP 2013-33.
Thank you, Mrs. Brighton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Questions? Mr. Bailey?
The security vestibule at Williamsport High School, it was estimated that $80,000 came in at $120,706. Was that because of additional work, or was that just the price of doing business?
It's the price of doing business. The bids, the estimate by the architect was based on what he thought that work would cost, and that's the number you see in front of you, the $80,000. We haven't had a chance to sit down with the contractor and get his schedule values to understand where that estimate was off. If I had to guess, it would be in the toilet rooms where there's a great amount of piece work, and maybe that was underestimated. But the fact that the bids all came in in a good cluster tells us that it is a good price, or it is the actual cost of that work.
And this GRC General Contractors have done similar jobs and have, I think, gained a pretty good reputation.
They've done a good job for us on numerous projects.
From the staff. This will be a security measure that will require you to go through a set of doors inside and then go through another set of doors before you can enter the main part of the building.
That's correct. Directly adjacent to the main office, and we've improved the office's ability, the staff who will reside in the office, their ability to monitor that door at the same time as part of this project.
I think, if I'm correct, now you have to have someone there physically to check people in and out. This can be done from the main office now?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Mrs. Brighton?
A question on the waste removal and recycling at Bestor. Just to be sure that I understand, this is for construction debris, not the demolition debris?
That's correct.
Because the demo, I assume that's covered under the contract for the demolition?
And which we have not bid yet, so...
Have not bid yet.
Right. We're waiting to bid that part of the project till closer to the time the demolition will occur, to reduce the, hopefully reduce the cost, because the contractors won't have to take on as much risk by bidding so far ahead of the actual action. But yes, when they bid that, they will be responsible for the disposal of...
That's what I understood in the past. I haven't seen this separated out like this before, so it's what I wanted to...
And it's new because of LEED.
Understood. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? I think certainly security's on a lot of schools' minds, and it's great to see that we're able to undertake a project that is going to provide us some tools at one of our schools that's going to help improve the safety. So thank you to the staff and superintendent for being proactive in this one part of trying to do what we can to make our schools as safe as we can. If there are no other questions, the question is on the motion by Mrs. Brighton to approve the bids. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next is change in award, 11A kitchen equipment for new Bestor Elementary.
Can you make your presentation? Back on September 18th of 2012, we presented to the board 20 separate bid packages for your consideration that collectively represent the construction work toward the building of the new Bestor Elementary School. Ashland Equipment was the lowest-cost bidder, who was awarded the 11A kitchen equipment package, and with their bid, they submitted a, two forms, their good-faith affidavit form, as well as their schedule of anticipated minority business enterprises who would be participating if they were, should be awarded the work. We had set the, rather, the procurement review group that studies the construction bids before we establish our minority business enterprise goals, had considered the entire suite of contract packages for Bestor Elementary School and set goals on a per-package basis. For this particular kitchen package, the MBE goal was 3%. Ashland Equipment at the time had asked for a full waiver. They indicated that they would be unsuccessful, and they would be unable to meet the 3% goal in spite of having made a good-faith effort to do so. In reviewing the... In reviewing the post-bid paperwork that came in, we gave it some extra scrutiny and Rob Rollins is the school system's minority business enterprise liaison, and so he has the final word in terms of the, whether or not a vendor has made a good faith effort or not. And the standard for making a good faith effort is quite, quite high. The bidders have to demonstrate that they've advertised for minorities 10 days prior to the bid date. They have to provide us with evidence that they reached out and used the Maryland Minority Department of Transportation MBE directory to try to seek the certified MBEs for us. And what we learned after the bid had been awarded by the board was that, in fact, Ashland hadn't met the standard of good faith that's required in the MBE procedure that we follow and we provide to all the bidders in the solicitation document. And once we made that determination, then we convened and discussed all of our options with Mr. Traut, and, and made a decision that it would really serve our best interest just to go back and ask the board to make a change in that award, to rescind the award to Ashland and approve the revised award to MS Johnston. Although MS Johnston was not the lowest bidder, they were, the responsive bidder, they did comply with the MBE procedure and they are able to achieve that 3% minority business enterprise participation goal. The additional cost for making that change to the project is $1,061. And the report was an attempt to provide you with a kind of a complete picture of the bids that we received and what we were recommending for your consideration today.
Thank, go ahead, Mr. Traut.
And I would just add that under Maryland law, a successful bidder is given an additional 10 days after a bid is awarded to submit their documentation. And that was afforded to this particular entity in this case that was awarded the original bid. And as Mrs. Freeman noted, their paperwork was not in proper order. I would also point out, and I think this is very important, is that if you do not meet the minority business enterprise requirements, when the state looks at the documentation that we submit, where the school system submits for reimbursement, if you do not have the proper documentation in place, the state will not participate in that particular contract, which in this case, there was a potential of $30,000 in less revenue from the state, which it would pay if the minority business enterprise requirements are satisfied. So that was one of the key factors in the school system going back to the first bidder to explain that process. That bidder then withdrew their bid and we're now at a point where MS Johnston, as Mrs. Freeman noted, is the responsive, responsible bidder and the appropriate party to which the board, if it is so inclined, can, can award this contract. What we would ask of the board is that you first rescind the original award to the, the original bidder, Ashland, and then proceed, if you're so inclined, to pass a motion to award this contract to MS Johnston.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Traut. Is there a motion to rescind the award from Ashland?
Mr. President, I move to accept the procurement review committee recommendation to rescind the award of bid package 11A Kitchen Equipment from Ashland Equipment due to their non-compliance with the MBE procedure.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Is there any, any discussion on Mrs. Brightman's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Now, is there a motion to award bid 2012-30C to MS Johnston?
Mr. President, further move that the bid be re-awarded to the next lowest responsive and responsible bidder, MS Johnston Company, Inc., who has agreed to extend bid pricing through March 19th, and the increased cost is 1,061.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Are there any comments or questions? And the question is on the motion to approve the bid. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Mr. Rollins, Mr. Traut. Next item on the agenda is the second quarter FY13 budget adjustments. Mr. South.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. We provided the requested second quarter budget adjustments to the full board and to the public this past weekend. This request contains a number of small adjustments as a result of savings from vacancies and turnover credit. There is also $357,000 in projected energy savings on line 10, and these projected savings come as a result of another milder than forecast winter. Additionally, special education has produced a save of nearly $200,000 because private placement costs are running behind budget. The cumulative sum of all these small savings allowed us the opportunity to book a $1.5 million reduction in the budgeted revenue on line one. This, this reduction eliminates the $1.5 million draw from fund balance that we had, that we had budgeted for this year, FY2013. This reduction leaves the fund balance intact at $12.4 million where we ended the fiscal year 2012 last July. All of these requested changes then net to an additional $137,000 increase that will also drop to the fund balance. This increase brings the fund balance total to $12.5 million. On February 28th, staff reviewed these requested adjustments with the finance committee and that committee and staff recommend them to the full board for approval. As always, I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion to approve the second quarter fiscal year 2013 budget adjustments?
Mr. President, move for adoption of second quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Questions or comments? Mrs. Brightman?
Just to be sure I understand, I think this is one, two, three, four vacancies plus turnover credits in four different areas, line three, four, eight, and nine. Would those savings reflect a one-time savings? Are those positions going to be held in the budget going forward? Are those positions, have those positions, are they part of the ones that were eliminated?
Most of them are, well, you said three, four?
Well, I'm looking at three, four, eight, and nine.
Line three, most of those positions are from the reorganization, so those, those will be eliminated in the coming budget. Line four are mostly due to turnover credits, so that's, that's going to be a recurring item.
Chris, for, the people that are watching on television, they may not understand what a turnover credit is. Would you just briefly explain?
Those are, a turnover credit's result when individuals who may be leaving us due to retirement, resignation, family moves away, that sort of thing, they may leave us at a higher rate and where they're replaced with someone, for example, at the beginning of the salary scale, maybe, maybe a teacher that maybe had been with us for 20, 25 years is replaced by a, a new teacher right out of college. That would create a turnover credit, obviously, because the, the departing teacher would, would make a significantly higher salary than, than the new teacher, than the replacement teacher.
Thank you.
So, so in, on line four, those are mostly, mostly the result of turnover credits. What other lines did you ask?
Eight, nine.
Eight and nine. Eight was a vacancy of a social worker. We believe that will be filled. And nine, those are, again, turn, as a result of turnover credits.
So the vast majority of nine is turnover?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. South. Seeing none, the question is on the motion to approve the budget adjustments. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. South. We'll move on to the 2014 operating budget.
The budget process has been progressing, progressing very rapidly, as the board knows, over the last two months. On February 5th, the superintendent and his staff publicly presented the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2014, excuse me, general fund budget. A month later, on March 5th, the board adopted the superintendent's recommendation as its draft fiscal year 2014 general fund budget. Last Tuesday, on March 12th, the board held a public hearing on the draft budget and also heard a recommendation from its budget advocacy and review committees. A copy of the draft budget was included in your Friday packet and it's, was also circulated for the public on board docs and on the WCPS website. Since the hearing last week, board members have had the opportunity to review the draft budget to satisfy themselves that it will provide the students of Washington County with the very, very best education possible and to formulate any additions, deletions, or changes that the members may believe need to be made based upon information that the individual members heard last week. Today, the budget calendar calls for the board to adopt its proposed fiscal year 2014 general fund budget that it will, will present to the Board of County Commissioners. That presentation to the commissioners will occur next Tuesday, March 26th. All that being said, staff recommends that the board adopt its draft budget along with any changes that it deems necessary as its proposed fiscal 2014 general fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed 2014 general fund budget for presentation to the commissioners?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the budget as, proposed budget as presented, general fund budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Reidenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. Questions and comments?
One short one, I know we've had several bites at this budget already, but on the anticipated general fund expenditures, when I look at the school nurse program?
Yes.
I know that we signed a one-year MOU with Meritas, and I'm not sure exactly the date on that at this point, but do we anticipate any changes on that cost of, of that program at this point?
We, we have been in some early discussions with Meritas regarding the FY14 contract, and we believe that we're going to be able to hold it steady for another year.
I think originally, there was some question over materials and supplies and computers, and I'm never, I'm not sure if I recall what that wound up being as a cost.
We certainly can provide those costs to you. We did have some one-time startup costs that we don't anticipate again in year two, but we do have some ongoing operational costs. For example, some of the software has an ongoing cost associated with it, but there were some additional one-time, for example, the laptop computers that we use, the desktop computers that we use. We have had to buy some supplies as well that are not consumable, as well as consumable supplies, but we'll provide a detailed accounting for those expenditures. I, I know that, Mr. Marco, Dr. Marco, you have been meeting with Meritas on those costs. The other issue that we're looking at is what will, and of course, Meritas has to do this on their own, which is one of the beauties of the, the migration, but they are talking about, what, what kind of compensation increase are you looking for your employees so that they can look at their own employee base as well?
And we still have, what, a wellness center at Boonsborough that we still need to find some funding for?
We do have, yes, we do have need.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Mr. Bailey?
Mr. South, the budget, line item by line item, budget, our size, the size of this budget, there are a lot of line items. And you give us a, a picture going back to fiscal 11, 12, 13, and 14. I, I examined it and found that some of those line items had not changed from 11 to 14. With costs rising and everything, I was wondering how that could, how that would come about.
Well, several things, Mr. Bailey. First of all, you know, the budget is a, just that, it's a budget. It's a, it's our best scientific estimate of what, what the costs are going to be. Many times, unfortunately, we, or fortunately or unfortunately, we, we need to move money from, from one line to another in order to accommodate. Many times also, the, the, we, we look at, at sections of the budget as, as a whole, as opposed to line by line. Very good example of that would, would be in the, in the facilities area where we have many, many different contracted services, probably 25 or 30 contracted services broken down by the various trades, line by line, in the contracted services area. We, we break those out merely for, not because we're required to, but because it, it makes for ease of finding historical information, for example, on heating, ventilation, and air conditioning repairs versus plumbing repairs or versus electrical repairs or something like that. As long as our total contracted services line falls in, or contracted services subcategory falls in line with, with what our budget's needs are, we don't concern ourselves too much with, with each of the individual lines within that, that subcategory, simply because we know that we cannot predict how many plumbing repairs we may have next year based on the number we had this year. So as long as that total, total dollars in that area seem to come out at the, at the end of each budget year, we know we're pretty much on, on target. Did, did I answer your question?
I, I think you did. You know, let, let me give you an example.
Okay.
The interscholastic athletic budget in fiscal 11 was X number of dollars.
Right.
It remained the same in 12, it remained the same in 13, it remained the same in 14.
That's, yes, sir.
And the, we, we've, we're not building anything in for cost of equipment that, you know, would come under this category or officials or whatever is involved with the interscholastic program.
Right. And, and that was an area, if you'll recall, that, that for many, many years, the board put very, very little in, into that area, and I think it was about seven or eight years ago, that the board pumped a, a significant amount of funding into that area because it, the board felt that it had been, been remiss in those lines for some time. That, of course, is an area that the board, if, if it sees fit, could, could, could add some other additional funding to, given the fact that our revenues are pretty well set by maintenance of effort and, and by the state formula. Those are, those are decisions that the board would have to make as to where to find those funds from another line item within the budget.
I think what you're saying is if, if we have an emergency or have a real need, we can go back and readjust those numbers.
And we do that quarterly if we need to.
So, let, let me try another way to look at that. Our student population numbers are relatively stable. We provide a base student allocation in terms of athletic funding to each school. Because the number stays constant, we're able to keep that within a, a set of parameters. That number doesn't vary much up or down. But this last year, we saw that we had a need to replace one-third of our football helmets. If we would have asked the individual schools to replace that within the budget that they had, that was flat, they wouldn't have been able to do that. So through the quarterly adjustment process, we put about $100,000 towards athletics to replace football helmets across this, the county. That's how we deal with those fluctuations. That, that's but one example of where we touch things. In other places, for example, in the instructional line item, where we have a textbook acquisition that may cost more than we thought, then we will reduce funds in another instructional account. This represents really, at best, a financial plan. It's a roadmap, but it It's a roadmap, but it is not a detailed analysis of where we will spend dollars. If you want to see that, you have to look at our actual financials, where Chris will recognize with his tape dollar-for-dollar expenditures against specific projects and account numbers at the end of the year. We don't do that forward-looking, we do that in arrears.
Thank you, that helps.
Are there other comments or questions? I'd just like to thank the superintendent and the staff for their work on this budget. I believe that it's a responsible document that I think reflects the economic times that we're still living in, that doesn't ask for, put undue pressure on other government entities, as you see going on in some of the other counties around the state where the boards of education and the commissioners are arguing about funding. I think this budget reflects that we're still in Washington County trying to work our way out of a difficult economic problem, and in a budget that increases barely 1% over last year. It continues to address some of the needs of the system, funding to ensure that we can add teachers to keep our class sizes where they are, funding to continue to upgrade our IT system, funding for the health insurance so that we can continue to provide probably one of the best benefits in the county to our employees. So I just want to publicly thank the staff, the finance staff and the superintendent for taking that approach to the budget and doing such a good job with limited resources in addressing the needs of the system for the next year and really for the next number of years.
Thank you. One point of personal privilege before the board votes. You know, Mr. South does, I think, a tremendous job at organizing it, a department of really dedicated professionals, but sitting in the front row is Eric Sisler, who is probably one of the finest young accounting minds that I've had the privilege of working with in over 25 years. You ask Eric a question, he not only knows the line, but he knows the amount of money in that line. So Eric, I want to publicly thank you for your knowledge of our budget. I know that you have a great mentor in David Brandenburg, who tests you every single day. But it's a team down there that supports Chris in ways that really make a relatively small district in Maryland the envy of many in our abilities to spend our dollars wisely. And to your point, Justin, to allow us to say to the county, if you can just fund maintenance of effort, we're not going to require dollars beyond that. We're going to be responsible to the taxpayers of this community, even though we're not a taxing authority, because we're going to make wise decisions with the dollars that we're entrusted with. So Eric, thank you. Chris, thank you. David somewhere, thank you.
He's in Georgia.
Hope he's not traveling on our dime if I said all that.
He's on vacation.
Are there any other comments? If not, the question is on the motion to adopt the 2014 operating budget. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. South. Next item is consideration of group health insurance for Vision RFP 2013-26.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
We're almost to you, teachers, this'll be quick.
I'm here this evening along with Gina Keller, who is sitting behind me, our benefits supervisor. We're here this evening to bring you staff's recommendation for a vendor for your vision insurance benefit for the next four years. In December, WCPS issued an RFP for vision insurance as part of its overall healthcare bid. We received responses from 11 vision providers, however, six of those vendors were eliminated as non-responsive. Of the remaining five, all five proffered benefits that were consistent with our current plan. National Vision Administrators, or NVA, is the lowest cost of the five remaining vendors, providing annual savings of approximately $63,000 from our current vendor's premium rate. Additionally, they are guaranteeing this rate for four years. NVA offers a wide network of vision providers, both locally and nationally, both for our employees and for our retirees. Our benefits staff has contacted several NVA clients and has received excellent references. In our area, NVA provides services to several governmental clients, including Garrett County Government, Montgomery County Government, and Montgomery County Public Schools. Staff requests your approval of NVA as the vision insurance vendor for Washington County Public Schools for the next four years.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion to approve NVA as the vision benefit provider for Washington County Schools?
Mr. President, I move for the acceptance of RFP number 2013-26, which is for NVA to be our vision specialist.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Fisher?
Will there be significant differences in the benefits and how one would go about obtaining those benefits than from our current plan?
The benefits and, the only difference that most of our employees will see is changing in their vision benefit card. There is some change in network, but you always have that when you change vendors. But so far as the benefits of the plan, they are, they mirror our current benefits. So there will be no change in the, for example, the dollars that are allowed towards lenses, the dollars that are allowed towards frames, the dollars that are allowed towards exams and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. South, do we know at this time whether there is a network of businesses that will accept NVA?
Yes, when, one of the things that we looked at with each of the providers, we required them to send us a list of their providers in, not only in this area, but in nationwide in regard to, for example, large change, where, because we know we have retirees, for example, who may be in Florida, North Carolina, Arizona, wherever. So we not only, we look specifically at this particular area because we look at, you know, the vendors that we currently have versus the eye providers that we currently have versus the eye care providers that the various proposing vendors have on their list. But yes, sir, in response to your question, we look at that in great detail.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to approve RFP 2013-26. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. South. Superintendent?
Gives me great pleasure tonight to move into a recognition portion of my comment this evening. And tonight, we're going to recognize four teachers who have either recertified or have been certified for the first time in the nationally board certification, national board certification program. This is a tremendous honor that comes to teachers based on serious, hard work. It is teachers examining their practice, it is teachers who are willing to put themselves on the line professionally, to be critiqued by colleagues and administrators alike, all in the effort of getting better to serve their children. I have been blessed in my career to work with many, many fine teachers, and these teachers have set themselves apart from even some of the best teachers. I know most of my board members here are here because they stand on the shoulders of some great teachers who inspired them, who led them to this community service. And so this evening, it's my great pleasure to ask the four teachers to come forward to receive their award. And the way that we're going to do this is I'm going to read just a little bit of a piece of paper about you and then ask you to come forward, and the board president and I will provide a certificate and a plaque and a trip to Disneyland. No Disney, I'll say no, no Disneyland. But I just want to say to you how much we appreciate the example that you are to your colleagues. The fact that you have really dug in and said, "I want to be better," inspires not just kids, the kids who are privileged to be in your classrooms, but your colleagues up and down the hallways. And so in order to get this done so that young man can go home, we are going to move forward. First, this evening, it's going to be my privilege to ask Brooke Josick to come forward. She is a first-time nationally board certified teacher. Brooke, if you'll come forward and wait right there for just one second. Then we are going to also ask Diane Mensert to come forward, Linda Barnhart, and Lucy Austin, who are all recertified as nationally board certified teachers. Mr. President, if you would join me to hand these awards out. I also know that some of my friends up here who like great teachers, if you want to step that way as they walk across, you could congratulate them as well. I know they would appreciate that. Please.
Any of the board members? Any of the board members want to offer any comments or? I'll just, I'll just add my congratulations and thank you to what Dr. Ridenhour said.
I'll also say the board will not be offended if you want to go home now. They won't mind, they won't mind.
There are no personnel actions tonight. Next on the agenda then is reports to the board, board member committee reports. Mrs. Harchman, the curriculum committee?
The curriculum committee met Tuesday, March the 12th, at 1:00 PM in the board conference room, and our agenda included the student learning objectives. A draft for the county student learning objectives was presented. A committee member suggested a change in the draft for the county so that the SOL would reference the Common Core curriculum. The draft is still in the process of being finalized. April 23rd will be our next meeting at 12:45 in the board conference room. The agenda will be posted on the website, and the public is invited.
Thank you, Mrs. Harchman. Mr. Bailey, finance?
Finance committee will meet the end of this month. I'm not sure the exact date. I believe it might be the 26th or 28th, but we meet as a finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Fisher, policy?
Policy committee met on March the 12th. First minute of the agenda was policy FF, which is on the naming of school facilities. The only changes we recommended at that time were a few grammatical ones. However, we decided that this particular policy, especially with a new school coming up, should have discussion by all seven members of the board, so that will be coming up in the future, probably at our next meeting for general discussion. We also reviewed policy BDF on advisory committees to the board. Again, only grammatical changes were recommended, so it does not need to go through a first or second read. Finally, Ms. Crable joined us for another revising of policy JFCR, which is, of course, the student dress code. Some additional minor changes were recommended, primarily just for clarity's sake. That policy should be coming up for first read on April 2nd, and our next meeting will be April 23rd.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Breitman, facilities?
Facilities did not meet in March. Our next meeting will be April the 23rd at 9:45 at the Frederick Street Building.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour.
Yes, HR met this morning. We discussed a possible policy addition or policy recommendation. The committee looked at this recommendation and determined that it was covered sufficiently in other policy to, that would make it redundant. As a result, we decided to not make a recommendation to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. And I don't believe the MAAB legislative committee has met since our last meeting.
This coming Monday, the next time it snows.
I think we're all experiencing a little of that recently. And the MAAB conference planning committee has met or not met since our last, is there any update?
Schedule for April.
April 5th.
April 5th.
Okay, great. Next is future agenda items, and the future agenda items list, to Mrs. Fisher's comments regarding policy FF, naming of school facilities. We have put that on the agenda for April 2nd. The intention is not to make a change to that policy at that meeting, but simply to provide some direction and guidance to the policy committee for what the full board's thoughts are on how we ought to approach that issue. Also, on April 2nd, we've got student enrollment projections, a legislative update. We're also going to approve any nominations for MAAB board of directors or MAAB officers. I know we have one member who is a member of the board of directors, Mrs. Breitman, who we will renominate or reendorse. If there are other members who wish to serve on MAAB committees or be considered as an officer, I'm sorry, not committees, board of directors, please let us know. We still have some time to get your names put through. Next is board member comments. Mrs. Harchman?
I just have one thing. Several of us had attended the MAAB Maryland State Conference at Annapolis, which was on ways of evaluating the superintendent. It was very informative. There was a lot of information presented. I think it would have been beneficial to all of us to have been there, but three of us got there, so I was glad for that, and I think we got some very good insights.
Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Bailey?
I have an apology to offer a young lady, North Hagerstown High School by the name Emily Ward, who was a state track meet winner in 3,200-meter race, finishing first in the state. I failed to mention that the last time. Congratulations, Emily.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Fisher?
I received a few emails and some phone calls, which I'm sure my other board members did, expressing various opinions on the issue of relocating the board of education. I thank the public for the interest they're taking.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Breitman?
Just a brief comment. I was looking at a newsletter from Pleasant Valley Elementary called Patriot News, and there's what I think fairly important information, and I'll read from it, it's brief, I promise. "Federal law requires a new application each school year to update your personal information and to match your situation with federal income guidelines. Please consider filling out this application." This is for free and reduced meal applications. "Please consider filling out this application even if you think your family does not qualify. The information on your application is kept strictly confidential. The price of your child's meal is determined by this application. Our school system has also launched," and this is the great part, "a new online application. This application will allow you to complete the process securely from your home and transmit it directly to the Food and Nutrition Services office without the possibility of your child losing the application or other students recognizing that your family is requesting meal assistance. It also works from your smartphone, excuse me. To utilize this application, go to www.schoollunchapp.com." And I would just applaud staff and the superintendent for setting this up. I know for years I've heard, and I'm sure other board members have, the concern that families have about confidentiality, and I think this is great. So I just wanted to share that publicly.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes, I have the privilege of going up to Clear Spring and
your time to get out and see these kids onstage or in concert, or whatever the case might be, to see, you know, what an exceptional group of kids we have in this county that perform and love to perform in front of a large crowd. So if you have the time or the opportunity, don't miss it, because I'm certain that everyone, every one of these shows is well worth your time. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. I just have a couple items. First, I attended the Daughters of American Rev, of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award. They recognized, I think it was four, it might have been five, of our high school students who really have done some spectacular things. It just reminds me that many, many organizations in our communities recognize our kids and encourage them to really do the best they can and seek service. So thanks to the Daughters of the American Revolution for doing that for these young people. And second, last Monday, I had the privilege of representing the board at the State Blue Ribbon Award Dinner, where Boonsborough High School was recognized for their achieving the distinction of a blue ribbon school of the 14,000 schools in the state? Or is it 1,400?
1,400.
1,400. Boonsborough was one of, and one of six recognized statewide, and the only comprehensive high school. The only other high school that was recognized was a magnet school, which, you know, magnet schools are great, but we were the only comprehensive high school that was recognized. I just want to thank Mrs. Pugh and the team. Really, it was a fun evening. The lieutenant governor showed up. Dr. Lowry was there for the entire evening. It was really a good way to celebrate great teaching, celebrate education. We walked over to the state house, where the House of Delegates and the Senate both recognized on the floor the principals who were there with that distinction. It was a great day for Washington County, a great day for Boonsborough, and again, I just wanted to let you all know that I think they represented the district really, really well. If there's no further business, we'll, wait, I forgot to talk about the calendar of activities. Two meetings coming up. On March 26th, we will be presenting our budget to the county commissioners at 10 o'clock in the morning at the county building. And immediately following that, at 11:15, we are going to have a work session back here in the central office to discuss the findings regarding the Allegheny Energy Building and the initial look at the repairs and work that would need to be done if the board were to decide to use that building for its central office. So that's at 11:15 here on March 26th. Now, if there's no further business, we'll declare the meeting adjourned.